See, we have, I have us at four sixteen now. So we have, you guys are attending and we also have five attendees for the workshop, which will be focused on strategic plan 2025. So if you're ready, we can start the workshop. And then the regular board meeting will start at five thirty tonight. And in the regular board meeting, we'll talk about reopening schools and timelines like that. So this one will be specific to the strategic plan, just in case people are tuning in and wanting to know what we're going to be talking about, when we're going to be talking about it. So are we okay with starting?
Yep, let's start the meeting.
Okay, well, do I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you. This is a follow up from our workshop back in 2020, kind of one of the last meetings. And turn it to present mode. And I'm going to kind of toggle through this and I asked you guys to weigh in individually on some of the sample progress monitoring indicators that we've kind of gotten to this point of the strategic plan adoption and really need some board feedback about what it is that you want to monitor at the board level. So. Let's see here. So the strategic plan, you guys are committing to a full revision of our board goals. And this is part of our current strategic planning cycle. We had a strategic plan that went to 2020 and 2020 is gone now, thankfully. And so here we are in 2021 and we have been going through the last about two years of really finishing up the 2020 strategic plan and looking ahead, engaging stakeholders. And part of this is you guys have adopted to make sure as we do these revisions of goals to really hold diversity, equity, inclusion at the center of this work. And was if we think about staying in serving each student, how do we make sure that our board level goals and monitoring is really enhancing transparency and really highlighting progress that we're making as a district? And so we've spent some time talking about foundational areas over the last several workshops and have identified relationships, learning, equity and support to be really key in trying to meet each of our students' academic and social emotional needs. We also recognize that in order to do that, we need a staff that feels supported and has the tools that they need to be effective with with the students that they serve. So in our last workshop, we spent some more time on the mission and vision and really talked about some of the language in there. And then you also helped with some of the goals that we established with each in each of those four foundational areas. And so I've taken the feedback that you gave in the last workshop and wordsmithed these a little bit and but really they they still reflect kind of the spirit of what we've talked about. And Citizens Advisory Committee has given us a tremendous amount of input on this over the last eighteen months. And so and their subcommittee really drafted the original versions of these. And so I'll just read them out loud and then we can pause if we need to. Our mission is seeing each student for the year their unique talents and gifts and serve them along their unique educational journey of growth. We want our students to discover the joy of learning, demonstrate respect for one another's humanity, and grow towards their individual potential by empowering them with critical thinking and collaborative problem solving skills. The vision is that we believe in an inclusive community where each student feels accepted, valued and respected for who they are. This sense of belonging is critical to the ability to learn and thrive as students create their future world. Our staff will be known for educational excellence, making a positive and lasting difference in the lives of our students and their families. Our students will be known for the contributions they make to their community. So within those mission and vision, what is it that we actually want each of our students to achieve? What what kinds of experiences want we want them to have? And if you recall, we had a big table of all these different kinds of outcomes that CAC put together, and we really took all those and boiled them down to these three major statements. Social, emotional, we want each student has the awareness and skills to manage emotions, set goals, establish relationships and make responsible decisions that support success in school and in life. For engagement, we want each student demonstrating curiosity and excitement for learning, tackling challenges with focus and determination and harnessing the power of emotion and motivation in their learning. And for academics, each student grows to be an independent or expert learner who is strategic and goal oriented or goal directed, resourceful and knowledgeable and purposeful and motivated. And so these are great attributes, right? Like great, great qualities that we want demonstrated in all of our students. And so as an elected school board, how do you monitor progress towards those goals? And so, or excuse me, towards those student outcomes and what goals help us deliver those student outcomes? And so within the the four foundational areas of relationships, learning and equity and support, we have drafted, I think these are fifteen goals. And of those fifteen, we're going to dig in today to really understand how do we monitor progress with them? So within relationships, these are the goal areas. And I'll just read them again as we move forward. For culture, each stakeholder feels connected and respected in their role and takes pride in cultivating our learning community that is focused on caring, quality and growth. Each student is known for their unique strengths and experiences. In partnerships, schools, families and community are mutually invested in student learning and wellbeing being. So within the learning, we have goals as well. And these are focused again in the same fashion of a once a statement or a word and then a descriptor. So student learning, focus on social emotional engagement and academic outcomes for each student. Universal design and proven optimized teaching and learning for all people by removing barriers in the way we design learning experiences and utilize curriculum. Multi-tiered systems of support, improve and optimize learning for students who we have not been able to reach through traditional and foundational methods. Cultural responsiveness, learning is designed in relation to individuals' cultural context, building on their rich heritage and experiences. Trauma informed practices recognizes the unique strengths and challenges of children and youth in light of the adversities that they face. And professional learning using an inquiry cycle to guide professional learning that is innovative and mirrors the experiences we want for our students. Under equity, inclusion, to realize equity, we need to develop and sustain an inclusive community built on belonging and dignity. Access, each child receives what he or she needs to develop to his or her full academic and social potential. And anti racism, we embrace an anti racism stance in consideration of the structures, practices and systems that support students. And then finally, within support, a learning environment. Develop and sustain a safe and welcoming learning environment for students, staff and community focused on caring, quality and growth. Professional staff, hire and retain inspirational staff that reflect our community, supported by an innovative and collaborative framework that encourages professional growth. Trust, establish trust through effective stewardship and intentional transparent communication that defines the optimal use of district resources and creative solutions. And finally, last but not least, innovation, embrace innovation to enhance accessibility, amplify student voice, connect communities in ways that are bold, engaging and inspiring. So those are all goals that have come out through the strategic planning process. And now what I want to walk through tonight and really listen to your discussion over the next half hour is when we think about those goals, those aspirational outcomes that we want for each of our students, what is it at the board level that we need to be providing you evidence of growth with instantly? And when we have fifteen goals and two to three indicators of growth with each in each of those, we have to make some decisions at the board level of what we're going to monitor. The district and staff will be monitoring all those goals and indicators, but there are some that are definitely ones that a school board needs to be paying attention to. And so that's where we're at tonight. And within each of those goals that I just read, I asked you to weigh in on whether you think that this is something that needs to come to the board's attention or not. And you'll see in this survey response here that within each, there's these three bars. And blue is that this is in some members minds, some board members minds. This is the most important for board to review. Red is it's important and yellow is it's important, but staff really are the ones that need to be reviewing that data. So what I would like to do tonight is just to kind of think about the relationships indicators. Excuse me. And so we have two goals in relationships, culture and partnership. And we have five potential indicators here. And when you look at them, you have panorama student and staff survey data. You've got thought exchange, community data. You've got classroom based, school level survey data. We've got. Parent square kinds of data. So thinking about how our community engages in parent square. And then we also have an indicator around voter approved initiatives. And so when we look at this, when you look at the blue should stand out to you as at least in your initial survey, areas that you thought were most important to review at the board level. And so I'm going to pause here on relationships and just open it up to discussion. And I can clarify anything. I know that as we're doing this via Zoom, it can be challenging. But if I need to make the screen bigger or go back to our slides or anything like that, I can do that for us as we discuss these things. So. Discussion about relationships.
I thought that.
Go ahead, go ahead, Erica.
I just thought the panorama. Data probably was the most important for us to look at. You know, thought exchanges I felt can vary depending on the temperature, timing. So those won't be as solidified. But I wasn't really sure about, oh, are we jumping to part? Are we doing both of these at the same time? I'll just do both of them at the same time. Um, I wasn't really. Sure. I mean, I felt like all voter initiatives passing is super important, but I didn't know that we needed it to be an indicator of something that we look at because it will already be looking at it. And parents square, I feel like we have some kinks to work out. So I don't want to put all our eggs in that in that basket is how I was feeling.
Echo that. The the panoramic panorama survey seems like it gives us a broader view at multiple levels and you can create targeted surveys that help us drill into some of the areas if we think we have areas of concern. I haven't, I like that. I'm contrasted with the lower graph. I don't use parent square because I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a student right now. So I haven't used that as a mechanism and not sure what I would get out of it. So that for my lack of understanding, I went, I think for the voter initiative, but that doesn't seem like a very. It's not a great measure. It's a great outcome, but it's it's hard to control that. If that's the mechanism that we're using to make a decision, I guess.
The other thing I should have said at the beginning too, is that there could be progress monitoring indicators missing. So as you look at these, you may say, I don't, I don't think those ones are the ones that we want to. But what about this one? And that's fair too.
And I would echo what you guys both said. I think the the panorama survey, we always say we want to hear more what's happening with students and staff, and I think that might be a good way to have that there. And then also, I agree with you on the parent square. I I do think it has some kinks to work. I I use it, but I I don't know that that would be necessarily anything we need to have as an indicator for us at a board level.
So when I looked at this, I I tried to look at it as kind of like my, I guess, kind of like my philosophy as a board member. And and what I saw in here was kind of especially in that first set of graphs, I kind of saw it as like thirty thousand foot elevation, twenty thousand, ten thousand. And I really felt that, you know, as board members, I think it's important, especially if we're trying to prioritize what we're looking at. I think that thirty thousand foot level is really what we should be prioritizing. I don't want to get into, not that the other, you know, things like the classroom based, you know, school level survey data isn't important to see, but I think that's something that we could afford to maybe delegate if that's if that's the right term to use. And then in that second set, I really feel like, you know, one of our, one of our primary responsibilities is the the initiatives that we we put out to the voters. And so I do feel like that's an important thing to keep monitoring on. And I think that's a a good gauge of, you know, our performance with the public.
I would agree. I think. The panorama, I think if we want to focus on student voice and make sure that we are hearing that, that is, you know, biggest or one large indicator of student voice. It was kind of hard because that versus thought exchange, thought exchanges, the community voice, which is also really important, but I think, but I thought I want to keep the student voice at the center, most important. And then the classroom based, school level survey, again, I think that's for the administrators to manage. And same agree on the voter initiative, since we are. Tasked with deciding what to put out to our voters and when and how much. I think it's really important that we monitor and measure and hear how that's going to. To. Keep us aligned, in check, informed with how well our our goals and visions for bonds and levies, we've done this before that, but. Align with the community. And what we're wanting. A long, long winded answer to say ditto.
So if I could just summarize what I'm hearing from you guys is that panorama data would be number one in terms of giving you guys updates on. And we have benchmarks in the year, you know, the fall survey, the winter survey, the spring survey. And we've, we've shared that with you guys previously, so continuing that kind of the practice. And then on the voter initiatives. That more of an update on like feedback, like what we do with the budget committee. Here's considerations that they're presenting around future bond issues or levy issues, setting the levy rate like we've done, continue that practice. Obviously, we know if it passes or not, it doesn't talk, take a lot of time in terms of a board meeting at that end, but it's more of the helping you define what should go on a ballot or what's a long range plan for sustainability in the district. And then the thought exchange data is something that could be timely, it sounds like, to the specific work. So it might show up in another indicator later if we're talking about, you know, all your school or something like that. Erica has brought that up a couple of times. And so if we're doing work related to exploration with that, then maybe that does become a tool that that rises up to the board level. And certainly, like even this evening, I'll share information about a thought exchange related to another major board initiative of reopening schools. So but just in itself, it won't necessarily be an indicator. Is that, is that a good summary? Doug, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm kind of back to Corey's point. I agree with the high level flyover look. And I guess when I was looking at the initiatives, whether they pass fail, I was thinking in terms of a task or it's failed, which is a pretty obvious element. But as I'm listening to it, it makes really good sense. And we haven't done, at least as a board in that setting, a deep dive on the initiatives and a post-election or post-issue surveys, where we really understand where people are in alignment by with their vote and why they made that vote and what districts they've made that vote and what elements of that vote were supportive versus what was not. It would help inform and educate us. You know, as to kind of how close is this overall package that's being presented? For example, in a bond issue, how close are we, what elements? Because we, the way we lump those together, it might not be evident, but it would be nice to have that. And I think in that regard, that would be a really strong piece of information.
Okay. I'm seeing heads nod as Doug is talking and I'm seeing, was seeing some heads nods that not as I was summarizing. So I think I'm going to move this to the learning area. Unfortunately, learning has more indicators, so it doesn't all fit in one screen. So we might need to do this one a couple at a time, just so that we can kind of see what we're talking about collectively. So the first one is about student learning. And the second one that you're seeing is about universal design. And this first indicator is the dashboard. And so it has the, you know, K twelve indicators of kind of positive, neutral or decline potentially. The graduation rate indicator, four and five year. And these are pretty high level, easy, almost pass fail kinds of. But it's all the depth that leads up to a graduation rate too, right? And then down here is about training. So the number of staff or some sort of indicator related to training progress as we go through this, this initiative of really thinking about how we design our learning. And then down here, there wasn't, there was, this was access to tools, resources, no blue bar on this one. So you can see in this one that the blue bars are around training, around a high level student learning outcome data. Would you like me to like just do that short summary over each of the ones in learning and talk collectively or just do this one two at a time?
I have a question. Are we picking one from the top chart and then one from the bottom part? Or it could be any of the on this whole. Okay, got it.
Within this category of learning, I would really like maybe two to three. You know, and like we did in relationships, we have basically two with thought exchange potentially supporting other other work if we need it. So any, any, would you like me to go through the other learning? So so you can see the bars with learning and talk about it collectively? Okay.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so the next one was multi-tiered systems of support. And again, you can see the levels of blue. This is about each school have a clear system of evidence based tiered interventions. This one is about schools will have schedules and tools that reflect that, the data collection. And this one is again about schedules of core instruction and opportunities there. Make sure I didn't miss one, universal design here. This is cultural responsiveness. You see that there's a strong blue in this area. Each staff member has experienced core training. So and and little blue in these areas, this is about a residency design studio. So it's a different level of professional learning, kind of deeper. Over here is that they deliver culturally responsive content instruction. So really the happening in the classroom. And then this last one is delivering culturally responsive instruction, embracing the range of student cultures and experiences. Trauma informed practices. Every school has established tier one foundational, social, emotional learning curriculum, and it's implemented with fidelity. And again, this is a training indicator here about our staff getting training related to trauma informed practices. And then finally, in professional learning, this goes back to the universal design learning up here. So strategies are modeled and practiced throughout all of our professional learning experiences. So we're not just preaching it, we're trying to live it in everything that we do. And then surveying staff regarding the value of their professional learning experiences and the transfer of that learning into their practice. And so setting some indicators about that. And then finally, developing some pathways for teacher leadership and other staff members so that they can, like, I want to be an expert in this area. And so then having a pathway, a connection to their professional learning as opposed to just course one, course two, course three, that might not be all connected. So we've got professional learning and you can see the high blue area was thinking about staff surveying. We've got trauma informed practice, not a lot of blue in that one. We've got cultural responsiveness, really strong in this about having some component of staff member training and knowing what that looks like and how many staff have done it. We've got multi-tiered systems of support. So thinking about how we provide intervention enrichment for students. And then finally, we have universal design with a strong one around staff training here. And then this is our student learning one. And I see that, you know, this one's probably, we don't need to talk about it, that you're going to want some grad rate data and you're going to want indicators leading up to that graduate data. So really, maybe what else from these other topics is important for you to know about as a board as we move forward with 2025? Or what are we missing too?
So when I look at all these. Measures and indicators, I feel like at 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 our level, like a course at our thirty thousand foot level, we have committed to these. Activities and programs, we're doing UDL, multi-tiered systems of support. And so I want to measure, making sure that we are allocating the necessary funds to do those programs and get those outcomes with fidelity. And I'm trying to figure out in this format, how, like, if if we do that, then a lot of these things will be happening at the building level and will be monitored there. And so I'm trying to figure out what are the right measures to make sure that what we've intended to do are happening and we've funded it appropriately and kind of finding that right level. And so I'm. I'm struggling with some of these because I'm not sure the right level is in there or it's between a couple of them. And I, okay, I was the one that didn't fill out the survey. Sorry, I'm working on it. It's hard. Takes a lot of thought. But I feel like we're, we're, we're in the neighborhood. It's just really assessing what is our role as as a board and what? What is the right level to monitor? You know, if I don't have to monitor what's going on in the classroom, that's. That should bubble up into other. Other indicators. So that's what I'm struggling with.
I feel like I hear you saying that you want to monitor that we've, that we are prioritizing it budgetary wise and that we're just doing it. Not that we need specific data on how many, but that we've given funds to this, is it happening?
Well, is it happening and? Is it effective? Is that the right place to spend our money? Is it effective? Are we, are we rolling it out in a way like the one indicator that, you know, teachers can take the the training? We're doing a lot of training, but it's training that enables them to translate that to their classroom. That's really important, right? We can roll stuff out and we can, you know, have a lot of training that really doesn't impact teachers' teaching. And so making sure that we're investing in the right places and that it's effective and that we're doing it in a way that our teachers are being able to apply it and it's impacting student learning in a positive way.
Connie, you and Corey are probably closest to this. Can you, could you, through the nature of the training, make that assumption or make that assessment? Conference training might be different than a nationally certified teacher training. And if we were investing in conferences like crazy and not at all a national certification, you you might be able to do something from that. So I guess I'm kind of wondering if from back to Erica's point, that was kind of interesting in the sense that if you use the budget and you allocated some sense of effectiveness to your budgeted investment, we could look at the scope of training or other investments in a learning component of your instructional staff to somehow get a measure of are we properly investing in this area in the most effective form of of educational professional development versus, you know, you, 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 some, somebody, Jeff and others will know better than I. What is the spectrum of education for instructors that is most effective and results in the highest transference to students?
So I I kind of feel like I'm, I'm kind of equating this to a like a policy and procedure kind of, kind of mindset where we're kind of setting the goalposts. We're saying these are our priorities and then it's up to, it's up to staff to implement, to figure out ways to implement. And I think that we, I I think that in terms of indicators that I'd like to see, I'd like to see, you know, our budget, you know, budget and funds being allocated to professional, to professional growth and and instruction. And and then trust our experts that they're going to seek out, that they are going to seek out the most meaningful. And by experts, I'm not just, I'm not just referring to, you know, our, you know, our admin staff or something like that. We have teacher leaders within, you know, the district, within each building. And and I would trust that we have a lot of those systems in place where I would, I would feel most comfortable, you know, delegating to them in in that way. So in terms, I guess, in terms of what I'm, what I would be looking for as a board member, I would be looking for things, looking for. Looking for. An allocation of funds and then maybe just kind of a brief overview of these are some of the programs that we are. We are investing in, use some of the trainings we're investing in, and this is how it ties back to our strategic plan. I think it's like kind of showing your work. As long as you can show how this ties back to the, the strategic plan, then I have confidence in our staff. That, that they will seek out what is most, what is most beneficial.
And I would add to that, that, so if that's happening. And like the, the second graph on our screen, multi-tiered systems of support improves and optimize learning. For students who have, we haven't been able to reach. Well then, so we should see some gaps closing, right? If we're doing UDL and we're doing MTSS, we should see some of these student performance gaps closing. And so. By looking at those indicators, you know, and have some sort of tie back to say, yeah, that gap closed. What was that based on? We've invested in here. Does, does A plus B equals C? You know, or is it just a random, we don't know why we're doing better? Right? All these random acts of greatness, but we should have put a program in place. And then see our student achievement increase as a result of that and be able to measure that that was the cause.
So again, I saw some head nods. I don't want to cut off anybody else, but I'll, I'll just kind of look at you guys and I'm going to do a summary of what I've heard. So we will update you on grad rate and student learning dashboard information. We'll also update you on the allocation of funding and resources related to these initiatives. Kind of telling you, this is what we think this, this will, this, an investment will, will be required at this level. And then some sort of connection back. So it could be potentially. Could be training, you know, this investment resulted in 300 staff being able to complete this training and this training is supposed to do A, B, and C. And then trying to use that A, B, and C and connect that back to the student learning data and gaps that we were targeting. So for example, we're going to look at gaps in math and math achievement and also gaps in math. Resiliency, just students thinking, I'm a good, good at math and I can persevere. And we're investing by A, B, and C. And this is what's happened with the data over time. Is that? Okay. So I'm going to go down to the next area then, which is equity. And I'll read the goals and. Just doesn't quite fit. There's three in this area. So the first is related to inclusion. And in inclusion, we have benchmark data. And related to inclusionary practice work. So like setting some, we want X amount of students to have this experience and following through with that. We also have the percentage of students that are in their least restrictive environment. And so this is a direct reflection of inclusion and it's linked to how we're funded at the state level and how they categorize students. Within access, looking at like detracking and student course taking analysis. So who's taking? Our upper level classes that have better access to opportunities after high school. This one is related to students who are served by an IEP and the goals that are written. And this last one is access to online and electronic resources. And so making sure that there aren't any gaps there. And then anti-racism, scope and sequence for our cell curriculum. So we know what's happening across K-12. The next one is evaluation cycles for staff are connected to equity. And so there's provisions in the student growth component of certified staff as evaluation. The next one is about school building and department level goals. And so this could show up in like the Poptova's, the problem of practice theory of action work that schools do. And then finally, each staff member, by the way, they design learning experiences reflecting like the training. That we've had and you'll see that in agendas and meeting minutes and things like that. Lesson plans. So we've got inclusion, some strong blue in this area. We've got access with some over here around course taking and what's happening with students in our system. And we've got equity, anti-racism, looking at cell scope and sequence and what's happening. This is a nice connection back to the panorama data too. So we're starting to see some threads. Across and then, and some more blue around looking at those problem of practice theory of actions with equity-related goals. So I'll, I'll stop talking again and I'll put it up on the first two and let you guys kind of take over.
I think one of the ones that I voted for was the math detracking data. I, I thought that was a good one to measure and an important one. So I know that was one of the ones that I felt like. Could be good for us to dig into.
I would again, just, I would agree with you, Tracy. And again, that's another, that's another measure on a. A process that was put in place and a decisions that were made. In the curriculum, in the structure of school, what kids could take in math and continuing to monitor that to, to. Validate that that was, that was the right thing to do. As I am, and I assume that would come to the board anyway. Same with the students having access to tools. So we approve budgets to buy Chromebooks and. You know, laptops for teachers and that kind of stuff. So at that level, I would expect to see it, but. I don't. I don't need to see details that I need to know every student has the tool and this is the tool that we need and it's been purchased and implemented. If that makes sense. And inclusion. Equity and inclusion, I think. I think that will be rolled up in our student outcomes, but I would like to see it separate just because we're focusing on it. And I think we need to be able to be, to measure it separately. But I felt like these two measures. It, it, it made me feel like we're, that inclusion was just very focused on our. Special needs community and not necessarily inclusion for everybody. And so what's the right measure for that?
How many equity? Measures are we trying to get here, Jeff?
Similarly, two to three. What I think if we keep it at two to three, you're going to start to see these threads connect. And so inclusion, like to Connie's point, we have an indicator related to students served by IP. And then we have an open indicator just around inclusion data in general. So using our panorama survey, we could potentially look at inclusion indicators that are there linking those two up as well. So we have a strand between culture now and inclusion.
I like that.
So I'm hearing inclusion data. I'm hearing this course taking is a really, this is a, I think this is a good one for board level involvement. Because you guys would set policy like what we did with math detracking. You know, that wasn't necessarily, everybody was exactly, you know, really pleased initially with that. But the reason we are doing that is because of data related to gaps in mouth, math foundational skills. And data related to not, not as many kids were taking higher level math classes as we'd like to see. So it's a policy decision that we should start to see results of that decision as kids go through the system. And we are working, we, we are part of a grant that will look at all of our high school courses. And do some analysis on who's taking them and why, and who's not taking them and why. And so that, that would be a good area to dig in on, dig in on with this equity. And then finally, we can look at our self-implementation as a part of the panorama data as well. And we can also link some of these indicators back to, if you think about the professional learning. Ones that we did in the learning strand about how many staff are taking advantage of these opportunities. What's required and what's the transfer into practice? I'm just jotting down some notes here. And giving you guys time to comment any further on this one.
I'll just pipe in here while you're writing. I just was in a training where we looked at, at, at our individual school. We looked at several transcript of kids to see, you know, from different demographics to see the. Look at the GPA and attendance and the course taking sequence, like how many kids that start in algebra? What do they take the second year, third year, fourth year? And it could see. Where the trends are. So the, and then looking at transcripts, you know. Who's not, who's not taking the higher level classes or not taking the college preparatory classes? And it was really. An effective exercise. And it makes me think, you know, this kind of work could lead to us deciding, well, we need more staffing in. Counseling, for example, I'm not advocating for that necessarily right now, but I'm, as an example. When are we having these conversations with these students and how is that happening? Is it freshman focus? Is it, you know, so it might. Tracking this data, I think, will be really important in being able to make some other larger level decisions based on what we see.
Connie, that was at the ABLE program?
Yes, it was amazing.
We're, we're a part of that same grant. So that's, that's what I'm talking about here. We'll have our training coming up. So.
Yeah, it was great.
All right, I'm going to move this because we're getting close to five o'clock. I want to make sure you have at least 15 minutes of break time before we start the board meeting. Support, I believe there are four within this. And so the first is a learning environment. And so this is looking at safe and welcoming learning environment. And we have student survey, staff survey and board listening opportunities. And you can see overwhelming that this is something that you guys want to continue to do. Both for staff, students in the public. The next one is around professional staff. So thinking about who we're hiring and how we support them. And it looks like some energy around looking at how we're retaining staff, specifically diverse staff and supporting them. The next area is trust and look at the, the consistent blue across this one. And so a lot of this is around. Communication, right? And how we're sharing information with our stakeholders and what does that look like? This, this links back to what you guys were talking about in the learning strand of allocation of resources. So here again, we're seeing a thread that goes through. So even though maybe we have two or three in each, it might come down to, you know, actually one through all four. And then this one is related to efficiencies. So trying to really find places that we can do better and then reporting that out to you. And then finally, innovation, and you can see energy around utilizing our campuses and having a long-term vision for what that looks like. This one is also of just like, what does it look like in a student's day in the future? I mean, this year obviously is not how we would like it to play out, but it's forcing us to learn some different things about how to engage students. So you've got this, when we just look at the blue areas, you see. Board listening, right, to different stakeholders. Not as, not as high around professional staff, like looks like more maybe thinking about. Manage, letting us manage that and maybe report at a high level to you. Lots around trust, lots of blue in this one. And then finally, this looking at our campus is longer range. So. Let's talk about these in any, any orders that you would like, advocating for ones that you'd like to see reflected in board agendas in the future.
I think the UL campus was a big one for me because we've had that property for a while now. And I feel like we could be able to come up with a plan of what we're doing there. And I think our community would like to know too. And so I just think digging deeper into that, and I think that's important to me. And then the trust one also, like. We keep hearing about transparency and are we being transparent with our information? And I love the new budget website that's coming out or that we've seen pieces of and that program. So I, I know I rated both of those really high. I, I know there was others too, but I think those were, I think those were my top two.
I love that under trust. It looks like all of us had at least once, if not twice noted those as high importance throughout and across the board. That is the most blue I've seen in any one category, which hopefully there's some way to translate that. Maybe the, each one of those into some sort of a collective effort.
And I think it's because we want to make sure that what gets said and decided here is reflected accurately and shared. In a transparent and an accurate way. And so there's a place for people to go and easily access us, access our decisions and understand those. In a really easy way. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be rocket science to, but not everybody can, you know, make these meetings. So what are we doing around UL? And what are we doing and making sure that we're prioritizing getting those messages out?
I know board listening was up there high too, and I, I don't know if we have to have that as a, I think that just indicates that we all still want to continue doing that. It doesn't necessarily mean that's something we have to. To monitor and track. I think that just shows that it's an important thing to us that we all want to keep doing. So whether we track that one or not, doesn't matter to me as much as the fact that it says, hey, we also want to make sure we keep doing that.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that first, I think those first, the student survey, the staff survey and the board, board listening. I think those just kind of, I think those reflect all of our desires to keep hearing from all stakeholders. So I don't know how we would necessarily monitor progress on that, other than just saying. This is a priority for us. We want to keep doing it. It's kind of how I read that.
Corey, with that, I, I, you know, I could, you guys have said we want to have listening posts, but we could formally say that we want four listening posts a year. As a minimum, and we want them just in general. And as topics come up specifically. We want to be able to engage the community in this way. And so there could be some accountability, I guess, board level accountability for that. By just establishing, and now that with Zoom, you guys have been doing the staff surveys as well. So there could be some indicators of we would like, you know, to engage classified and certified and administrative staff at least three times. You know, things like that are goals that could help with board accountability too, is, is. We know that each year there's crises that happen that kind of take over. And sometimes if we don't have those indicators or goals, then it just time drifts by, right? Like, so.
Well, and something on that, a little bit off topic, but I know. There was a, in the update you gave, there was a spreadsheet where we're supposed to put in times that were available for the next time to meet. But it wasn't specific enough to me. It just said, put in times. And I'm like, do you want February? Do you want January? And so I, I guess a little more, hey, what's your February schedule? Pick three. I didn't know, I didn't know what the timeframe was on that. So I haven't done it yet.
Okay, yeah. And with that, it is just like pick, you know, an hour or two that works for you. And then we will share with staff that they can sign up to, to meet you then. So. If you said all February, you might have a lot of appointments. So try to narrow it down.
I just meant, do you want me to tell you what my January schedule is or do you want me to put a time in June?
Like I. January.
Yes, okay, that was my question.
Yep. Next, the next three to four weeks really, I guess, is so that we can turn that around to staff and allow them to sign up and then turn it back to you to say, here's what's, who signed up for the next couple of weeks.
I would like to weigh in on the professional staff. I know that we've talked a lot about. The value of students being able to see staff who look like them. And so there's a lot of talk around the diversity in our. Teachers and staff members. And so I know that Marilyn has, I assume Marilyn has, is working on that. And so I think just some measure. Or indicator that just. You know, are we making progress on that?
Okay, so for this, this one, I'm hearing continue listening practices and maybe identify some goals related to that. Think long-term with the innovation piece and think about the resources that we have and maybe revisit. and maybe revisit a plan for that and engage the community. Trust across the board. I liked how Doug said, maybe we can weave through all four of those, something that just reflects that these are important things. And then finally, a report related to the impact of some of these policy changes and what's happening with recruitment and retention of professional staff. Okay. So overall, I think I'm going to go back, stop this slide. Google's taking a while to, to spin here. Okay. So, and this didn't go to the slide I wanted, even though it was on there. I wanted to slide with our. Okay. So these are the outcomes that we've identified. We had a mission, vision, values. And within these social emotional engagement and academics for our students. And then we have these goal areas that we've worked through. And now I have your direction around progress monitoring in these. So my job now is to take the conversation today and to lay out kind of a plan for how we will look at these as we move forward. Also, what I want to do now is based on your feedback and working through kind of some rough documents, is to start to turn those documents into something that really people can look at and understand and make connections. And so I showed some examples in our two by meetings of what that could look like. And so I will start that process as well. And then we'll formally probably adopt, I think we had in February, one of the workshops there, one of the meetings adopting the 2025 strategic plan. So between now and then, I'll give you some more drafts based on this conversation tonight. And then we'll look to formalize the plan in February as we move forward. So I really appreciate your time on this. I know that there's a lot of things that are really pressing right now. Really important things and really tough decisions that you all are, are, are trying to make on behalf of, of the larger community that we serve here. And so thinking about long-term, sometimes it can be hard to make our brains do that. But it's also, you know, thinking about long-term is really informed too by the, by what we're going through right now and, and really reprioritizing what's most important. So with that, I think Tracy, if, if there are any other final comments from the board or yourself, my part, I think, is done in the workshop.
Okay, is there any other comments from any other board members? Okay, then I will adjourn this workshop at 5:09 PM and I'll see you guys back here at 5:30 for the school board meeting.
Thanks, Tracy. Thank you all.
You guys.
Can we just stay in here and mute ourselves?
Gail, are you going to stop this one? And then it looks like Gail left, so it looks like we're going to stop this one, Connie, for recording purposes and then have this archived as the workshop and then go from there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So should we log out and then come back?
Yeah.